Experience program.
Yeah.
So I would say that that is probably going into a trade or a vet, you know, or
Not just.
I guess is how I would read that.
No, I think you're right. It's kind of a career technical.
Well, it looks like.
Pass or something.
Yeah, between instructions going specific learning at a job. So there.
And then the insurance part though is interesting because then it would be the workman's comp, right?
There's a bunch of options.
And general ability.
I think we needed all the insurance too, so for sure.
I would say table this one probably out and do a little homework on it.
But do some homework on it because I think it could be easy enough to, it's a great idea and we need to be doing more of it if we can find a way to do it.
Takes more time to understand it, so.
Well, and there may be other districts who are.
Is that option?
There's lots of options on this.
Yeah, for the second.
There are two page.
That's it.
Has to do with insurance and pay and.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think we're thirty-one ten, Chuck.
Yes, as far as the students' entrance placement, transfer and so on, school entrance, it talks about proof of students. Students' parents, legal guardian or legal custodian presents proof of identity of a child to the school with info and so on. Let me get down to adding that language to ensure student receives education services in the best interest of the child. And then the superintendent is the point of contact for those to get those things taken care of. And that's the only change there is that addition.
Is it underlined, that number one at the bottom, is that addition to that two, the D O S on the bullpen? It's underlined.
Right, is bec- well.
The proof of identity.
Proof of identity means certified copy version to the.
So is that you might which also.
Footnote there.
Footnotes for number one.
Mm-hmm.
Where it says the identity of the child in line twenty-three. It has the one, I think that's the.
Oh, okay, I see.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah.
Policy thirty-one twenty-five, which is a recommended revision is in terms of homeless children, and you can see the added statement there. There's a couple on sexual harassment, sexual intimidation and sexual misconduct, including, I think a big thing is electronic or physical contact, and that's sexual intimidation, discrimination. They have sexual intimidations a couple times in there. So.
Just more clarification of language.
Why delete that? Is it because it says it would be after an investigation, be determined after investigation.
You're talking about deletion on the second page?
On the back, yeah, around line thirteen on the second page.
So above that, in line eight, it says any student of the district would determine after investigation to engage in sexual harassment. So does that mean that through investigations, they've had their opportunity to ensure that are given appropriate opportunity to defend themselves? I'm assuming that's what investigation means?
I'm assuming it's had a chance to.
I would say that's two legally, that's two different concepts.
Just my opinion.
There are two different concepts, investigation and defending yourself are two different things.
So why would we want to take that out then?
Unless there's that somewhere else in the different policy and it's repetitive.
Either that or was something happened and they didn't want it in there because it caught trapped.
They don't, they don't explain why. It's, this is all legally driven.
Um, I think there was something.
There's another sexual harassment.
That talks about the process, and so it may just mean this is more like what we will do than a whole process.
It says it's, and broaden the enforcement options available to district officials in the event sexual misconduct of any kind is proven to be to occur. And there is, yeah, there is another policy, the other one says.
Forty-four ten.
Yeah, this one is students and then that one will be staff.
Yep. Community relations, you see there's some visitors to school and basically outlining, lining a little more clearly, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Policy forty-three fifteen, community relations. You can see there's some additions and some strike, strike throughs there, deletion, just a few deletions, but overall, I think those are, that's a good changes there. The forty-three forty, another recommended revision, that's just on the second page of there. It's adding another exception to. Policy number forty-four ten, this whole addition of the county interdisciplinary child information and school safety team. It's all a great addition, that's law driven there, and we have that up and rolling already with the county, so.
Do you have a team in place here yet?
Well, a team is, a team is, the school is just one representative on the team. It's not a team at school.
Yeah, so you got the.
It's public health, it's.
You got the county superintendent, the sheriff.
Yeah, there's.
You know, there's five or six. This is retired, that's my correct, tells you.
Line twenty-four.
About covers all the.
Yeah.
Public law for it and stuff, other than the health, which is law.
And we've actually had a county, a meeting at the county level that we've had staff attend for a number of years. So this is just a transformation of our evolution of that.
Clarifying.
Uh-huh.
I see it gives you something more to do, Chuck.
Policy fifty-twelve, another recommended policy, and this is that, like I said, there is another policy, and this is dealing with staff on sexual harassment. Policy fifty-one twenty, this is, there's a couple options there, the school district will, option one, send candidates, candidates were recommended for hire to blank to obtain fingerprinting, or option two, process candidates recommended for higher fingerprints. We are going to send candidates to, option one, because that's what we do now, right? Policy fifty-two twenty-three, another recommended policy for revision, that personal conduct, they added some stuff there. Is a good thing. Policy fifty-two fifty-six, reduction in force, they took out certified, 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 then other than administrators and so on, and added needs of the students employed and so on to that language there for reduction in force. Policy eighty-two twenty-six, just a other tobacco or nicotine delivery thing because of all the, the jewelry, there's just a story on national news about it.
Yeah, twelve people's been killed or something like that.
Yeah. Serve eighty-four twenty-five P, the service animals.
Well, and it was, if I might, before we move on from the tobacco free one, we had already done a little bit of different language to cover the vaping devices. This is just a clearer way to say it, but we did in our revision have it be different than the standard when Joe helped us.
And I would recommend the eighty-four twenty-five P and then eighty-four twenty-five as well.
Okay.
Service animals.
And it can't be just a certification to print off the animal.
Right.
They need to be really cert.
No, I just want to, before we go much further, I just want you guys to understand that whatever we do with policy, we're going past our lawyers' rights and we're supported. And if something happens here, they have to protect us. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we don't do anything without the money we spend on them. Okay, with that aspect, but we still make all policies for the school district, for the ending. So what I would like to, would be okay Patty, if I read off policies that don't have any changes and then go over the ones we want to add, the options first, how do you want to do it? I can do the ones we're gonna, we know we're gonna do, then I can do the ones that we're gonna do the option one or two, or I can do it with the options.
Well, let's go down and do the ones that we know that we're gonna, that don't have any options.
That's what I.
We'll just read off the numbers and then we'll leave off the ones that we have options and we can do those each separately.
So you guys ready? We're gonna vote, the first motion would be on eleven-twelve, eleven-thirteen, eleven-forty-five, or shoot, did I say that right? Eleven-twenty-five, fourteen-twenty-five, fifteen-twelve, fifteen-twelve F, ten, seventeen-hundred, twice, twenty-one-hundred, twenty-one-sixty. Start it from the back. Thirty-one-ten. Thirty-one-twenty-five, thirty-two-twenty-five. Forty-three-oh-one, forty-three-fifteen, forty-three-forty, forty-four-ten, fifty-twelve, fifty-two-twenty-three. Fifty-two-fifty-six, eighty-two-twenty-five.
Fifty-two-twenty-six.
No, fifty-two-twenty-six, you said fifty-two-fifty-six.
Dyslexia, fifty-two-fifty-six.
Fifty-six, fifty-two-fifty-six.
Yes.
That's the warrant, the reduction in force?
Yeah.
Oh, I went wrong in the narrative, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
Did I screw up or did I?
No, I know, you're good. I already.
I thought my dyslexia. So, okay, so after. I'm gonna go to eighty-two-twenty-five and eighty-four-twenty-five P and eighty-four-twenty-five. Now, all these policies are as read, no changes. That would be.
So what are the ones that aren't then?
I will do those next, just we'll go where we're at. Cause I do fifty-one, wait a minute. Those are all the ones that we're gonna do.
You and I missed one in here and then I got lost, so that's fine.
Did I do okay on?
I think you're right on.
Okay, I have the others.
Twenty-six-hundred we tabled.
Forty-four-ten is option two.
Did you say twenty-one-sixty-seven or twenty-one-sixty-eight?
Yeah, twenty-one-sixty-eight, that's, that's for waiting on.
For waiting on.
I'm going that one.
Those are the only two I didn't hear.
And then we're tabling twenty-six-hundred.
I don't think here's a twenty-one-sixty-seven, I think that was the number mistake on my part.
Fifty-one-twenty.
And fifty-one-twenty is option one, we have two that have.
Options and then.
See, that's where I come, there's no fifty-one-twenty in there either, so.
Fifty-one-twenty.
No, there's not.
It is, it's right down there in the narrative.
Recommended policies.
Oh, it is.
All the time.
I organized them by required revisions, recommended and.
That's what gets you on a case.
Yeah, sorry. So some of the numbers are down there below.
You'll just, I don't have trouble reading them yet if you guys want.
I think you got them.
Just tell us the ones that you're reading.
I've got the ones.
Okay, all right, so we'll go for Mark.
Thank you. There's only three of them.
Fifty-one-twenty P is with an option, twenty-six-hundred is to be tabled, which twenty-four-ten P will be an option and twenty-one-sixty-eight is a table.
That's what I have, yeah.
Okay.
So that's where I got lost, twenty-four-ten. Wasn't in the narrative then.
No.
Yeah, that's where, I got to that one, you kept rattling on and I couldn't find it in the narrative, so.
Oh, you should stop me.
Well, I was, thought I was the.
So.
So there's three of them then.
One, two, or.
Three, should be four.
Four.
Fifty-one-twenty.
Fifty-one-twenty P.
One, two, three, four.
Are you on track now?
Twenty-four-ten.
I almost forgot I was on TV. Don't cussing guys.
So one, two, three, four, I'm happy now.
Okay, thanks, all right, so that's where we will start.
I would make a motion, you want me to read them all off?
No, do not, I already read.
I would make all, I would make a motion to approve all of them without.
All the ones I read off.
Yeah, just all the ones that I read off.
I'll second that.
You do that right, without?
Mm-hmm, thank you, all right.
Okay.
You could have done it all at once, too.
Say no.
I mean, just go.
Okay, I've been moving seconded, any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? All those policies are in place. Okay, so now let's go to the one with the table last. I got it in twenty-four-ten.
Twenty-one-sixty-eight, twenty-six-hundred.
So we're gonna go straight to the option ones.
We're gonna table.
I'm thinking out loud, so twenty, or twenty-four-ten P is option two, that's the dual credit with the college professors.
You want to do them one at a time?
These ones I want.
We can do them all in.
No, okay.
I'll just read them as, I'll just read them as they are, we can do it with one reading. And fifty-one-twenty P, option one, is the, school district will send candidates recommended.
Sure, yes.
You guys good? You have a speed bell?
I would so move those two options, those two.
Policies.
Policies. 太多 options as read.
I'll second that.
It's moved, it's been moved and segmented to accept the two policies with their options that have been designated. Any further discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Passed as read. Okay, we'll table twenty-one-sixty-eight and twenty-six-hundred till next meeting.
Yeah, what about the deleted one?
Have we tabled?
No, you, no, eighty-four-twenty-five.
Where did I put that one?
It's in the narrative.
Yeah, eighty-four-twenty-five.
Never read it.
It's the deletion of the service animal ones, the P to be replaced with, I think, eighty-four-twenty-five. Deletion of F, sorry. Maybe it's on the packet.
No.
I didn't get that one.
Oh, it's the form, that's what it is.
Yeah, form, it's that service animal in district facility form.
We didn't go over it, so.
Well.
Not on the form.
Will you, well, I think you have to because it's a form that's.
No longer valid.
Right, although with the, you know.
Do I read it?
The form is just a form that people fill out for service animals.
Okay, well, let's just hold on and get it out then, because it's already on our, it's on our. All right, so.
Well, we're tabling right now.
Right. Can you, do we, I got lost, can we get a second?
We haven't got it first.
I didn't think so. So, it's okay.
So I would move that we table policy number twenty-one-sixty-eight and table policy number twenty-six-hundred and twenty-six-hundred P for further review.
Move, move the seconded table, twenty-one-sixty-eight, twenty-one, or twenty-six-hundred, twenty-six-hundred P. See any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? They are tabled.
So I think I would like to propose that we do delete, per the narrative, delete form eighty-four-twenty-five.
Very good. It's been moved and segmented to delete eighty-four or twenty-five F, any discussion? If not, all those in favor to delete it signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Been deleted. Policy so does it. All right. Oh, I guess we're back to the handbook, which is still policy.
But this is the athletic handbook, it's not the.
Right, athletic handbook, so who's covered that?
I will do that.
When he's gonna talk about changes.
Dennis.
Changes were very minimal the year, the board members, you know, and then on page eight, item number four, we added that tape is allowed on the gym, no tape is allowed on the gym floor unless cleared by the athletic director. It used to just say no tape, period, but there is a couple of brand names of tape that John and I have found will assist coaches as they're working on placement and things that do come up, that do pull up very easily and are not a pain. So because we are in the modern age and there's more than one kind of tape, number four, we added. Okay, then on page number twelve, that's right in the middle of your book, page twelve and thirteen are all of the, the steps if a child were to be either self-reporting or caught with drugs, alcohol, all that kind of bits. We just clarified the language about vaping, that it's a nicotine product also, it's not just tobacco, it's nicotine product. So we just added that language so it would be similar to the other handbook. That the next change from the previous handbook is on page eighteen. In the past, our alternate travel form, and this would be used like if your child went on a field trip or went to a sporting event on one of our buses, but then you wanted to check the child out and bring them home yourself, you know, they were gonna ride home with you, it used to be that they only could be checked out and ride home with parents. There've been a few times where parents are really asking if they could sign a form that you're giving permission that they would ride home with someone else. Maybe it's an aunt, maybe it's grandparents, it could even be parents of another student because sometimes there are circumstances, especially with our girls softball team, that it was hard to get them from district music festival and then back over to something with softball because it was a conflict. I talked to the insurance carrier and to Montana School Board Association, and they advised that as long as the parent does sign a form that releases to another person on the form, it's named who that person is, so Marion could give permission for her child to ride home with Joe Hawes and his wife and sign it, that form then does release us from liability. So we added in C, we changed a little bit of wording and then added D, the alternate transportation. And then the form itself has also been changed to reflect that a parent can grant permission to another approved adult, so you can't sign them out to ride home with another student. Any questions on the alternate transportation? Okay.
Do you have a form?
Yes, there is a form, and it's in the office that's ready. Often, like with Mr. Reilly, for example, today, there were some circumstances that a student may need to ride home with a different person, so I sent him with some forms already signed. We discussed that, you know, parents may want to use those, but that way he had some with him in the, in the event that parents would want their child to ride home with someone else.
Good old days, it was a napkin, it was anything.
Yeah.
Parents would sign.
Yeah.
But the insurance carriers would prefer that it was a form. And then the last change is on page twenty-two, it's the final page, just the change in uniform rotation, so just rotate it up, you know, what would be, because we've already replaced volleyball and track last year, we did football this fall, and then this next school year we'll be looking at track and tennis. So that's just a rotation that just keeps revolving. I stand for questions, as does Mr. Shepherd, if you have anything you want to talk about.
I would so move to approve the, I thought I can look.
Second.
It's been moved and segmented to approve the nineteen-twenty twenty athletic handbook, any discussion? If none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Handbook passes, all right. Consider hiring concessions ticket taker.
As I mentioned, Miss Lightnum has, would like to shift to that position from the gate admissions to the concession ticket taker.
So.
I have second.
It's been moved and segmented to approve Miss Lightnum as a concessions ticket taker. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries, consider participation for state multi-surplus property program.
Yes, this is a renewal, and you must have to renew it every three years, because I did this when we were looking for a plow. Remember snowplow? I wanted to try to get one through the state surplus, and there's a, procedures you have to go through to do that, so I did that. We never did make a purchase, I don't think we purchased anything from this program, but just in case. It is an option for the district to purchase through that program, so Patty and I filled out the form indicating the staff who would have that ability to be able to do it, myself, Patty, Rob and Larry. Is that, is that right Patty? People I listed to be able to do that through the state, so I'd like to do that, and I'd recommend allowing us to take advantage of that, it should, should the need arise.
So moved, second.
It's been moved and segmented to participate in the multi-surplus program, all those in favor, for any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign? Motion carries, all right, we'll adjourn. And is everybody good with two page, October eighth? Well, what, so that's, you'll be hunting, you guys, you'll be making a limit.
Sheriff.
We could do a special meeting.
You can do a special meeting anytime, but I mean, you guys live thirty miles out of town, that's. We.
I guess, I guess the biggest thing I.
Yeah, you can if you're there for the whole meeting, so you could have a special meeting, have it over the phone.
Let's sat phones back and.
Well, no, if we have a special meeting, you guys would have to drive all the way in, as long as you have one person to have all buddy on secret phone.
Ten minute special meeting.
Right, so it'd take ten minutes. How was your thinking Chuck?
Well, I, I would like to get her hired, but we can wait another month, right? Of course, it's gonna be two months.
November, yeah, he's gonna miss November.
Let's, can we do a morning special meeting?
We did it like eight o'clock in the morning?
When is Jerry gonna be back? He's up.
I, he's up, yeah, I don't know.
So let's do this.
Eight o'clock, sir, I'm trying to schedule that, I'm trying, that's.
What's a good time then?
Seven? I'm good for seven.
Seven, seven-thirty?
Well, we have to talk to Jerry in order to get that, so what I was gonna say was this.
It's not the time, it's the day.
What do you got?
Well, the season opens on the fourteenth, like, that's, we're on the fourteenth.
I don't have a calendar.
We should do it on the thirteenth.
If you do it on the thirteenth, definitely.
September, you mean?
Yeah. Morning you leave with your hunters.
Joe's saying the summer better.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, if we could.
Might that be to play with your.
We have to have a forty-eight hour notice.
Which I can notice it tomorrow morning and that gives us.
We're gonna find out Jerry gonna be here right now.
Right, I don't, Jerry might not be here.
But he might be able to be on the phone.
He might be in Brownie East Glacier in the middle of nowhere.
He has service.
What can we do pending getting them all to Jerry tomorrow, first thing in the morning?
Okay, so which mornings are they gonna be?
So, they'd be like.
Friday?
Friday the thirteenth.
Friday the thirteenth.
Is it the thirteenth?
Yes, with the full moon.
Yay, Cheryl.
Keep in mind, everybody, if Jerry, if you're gonna hear from Jerry, then it's off, then that's what it is. What time AM?
Seven AM, we're looking at.
Seven's better for the school, what do you wanna have it at?
Who's gonna come, are you?
Be Friday morning.
They all have to go.
And then he would be on the phone.
They can be on the phone.
I could be, I could do either.
Okay.
How many people have to be here, do we have to have a quorum present?
I feel like I need to be here or somebody.
Because you miss us.
I don't know, do we need to be here, Mel?
This is a high school special.
We have to have a whole board, don't we, for Cheryl's deal, so what you know?
You could be on the phone.
Oh, in person, you probably want a quorum in person.
I would, I would think that we.
I can be here.
Would, yeah, I'm trying to figure out, yeah.
That was early.
I will be here at seven o'clock to facilitate.
You can get first one of violins then, right?
Right, I was trying to run over joggers this morning.
Were you one of the people that tried to kill us this morning?
Your little blinky thing.
Were you in a semi truck?
By the time I see little blinky things. Should I get some life insurance on you there, Mel? All right, is everybody good with that, so we'll.
One agenda item, right?
One agenda.
Just wanted to hire the.
I'll be. I'll just get in Bounty's office and we'll try to run it in there.
Do you have a bridge or a hot tub?
What?
Do you have a bridge?
Are we gonna do it with multiple people?
You're not in my mouth.
I know, I do it.
Multiple cell phones.
So, we don't, you don't have a, we don't have a conference bridge?
No, you don't know what that would look like.
I cannot be here.
I haven't seen one, I need a picture.
You should meet with Marion, Levi and Joe, you can meet here in person. Okay, so we just need, I'll have a cellphone, so Pat and Jerry and Lane then wouldn't have to come, are you gonna come though?
Well, I'll come.
Okay, so Pat and Jerry. Okay.
Friday morning.
Friday morning, seven AM, so everyone to be here then, we just have to, if Jerry.
I'll make coffee.
Okay, I, I will let you know via text, is that okay?
Okay.
If we're on or off.
Okay.
If I can get ahold of them, I'll actually text the rest.
We can almost text.
Patty's obviously here.
Right here, seven AM.
We use a bridge, we use a phone to deal with the high school rodeo and it's free. You can even call into the newspaper.
Yeah, I just get.
I can, I'll figure out, I'll get information on how to do it, all right. I gotta, we're adjourned.
You're adjourned?
Yeah.
Wendy and Pat, Pat said we're jerrying with the city, Wendy bossed her just a second.
Yes, I need to, I'm so sorry.
Need to calibrate here early, I blame the airport for.
So, as long as the corners are there, I can leave, right?
Yeah, as long as the corners.
That's not fair.
Thank you guys.
See you, Mary.
Oh, yeah, add them to it.
You know, you know you want.